We can tell the time now.
Oh, look at you. Seven o'clock.
Calling to order the Monday, April 18th, regular meeting of the 39th Council of the City of Berkeley. Ms. Mitchell, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Baker.
Here.
Mayor Protam Dean. Councilmember Gavin.
Here.
Councilmember Hunnen.
Here.
Councilmember Price.
Here.
Councilmember Vilani.
Here.
Mayor Terbrecht.
Here. Our first order of business this evening is the approval of tonight's agenda. Is there a motion to approve? So moved.
Support.
Motion made by Councilmember Gavin with support from Councilmember Baker. Are there any changes or additions? Seeing none, Ms. Mitchell, would you please call the roll on tonight's agenda?
Gavin.
Yes.
Hunnen.
Yes.
Price.
Yes.
Vilani.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
Terbrecht.
Yes. At this time, please stand for the invocation and remain standing for the pledge. With us this evening is Pastor Rachel Dunlap.
Good evening. Is this on? God Almighty, we thank you for the seasons that we get to experience here in Michigan. We are very excited to be able to plant flowers very soon. We pray that you would watch over and inspire all members of the city council that are here this evening and bring peace to this space. Let them hear fully and know the best and right decision to make for our city and for the future going forward. I pray all of these things in your strong name, Jesus. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. We will now move to public comments, and these are public comments for items that are not included on tonight's agenda. You will have the opportunity to speak on specific agenda items while they are being considered. Remember, councilmembers will not engage you in discussion, but if your concern needs to be addressed by city staff or Department of the City, please sign in at the clerk's desk. When you come up to the microphone, please state your name and city of residence.
My name is Pete Kelly. I'm a resident of Beverly Hills. I'm here tonight in my role as the Chair of the Berkeley Huntington Woods Youth Assistance. We received a communication from the county, and as you're no doubt aware, Youth Assistance is a tri-sponsored organization from school districts, municipalities, and the Oakland County Circuit Court Family Division. This communication reads, Dear School Board and Municipal Elected Officials, Volunteers, Community Supporters, and Youth Assistance Staff, we know that our children and families need our support now more than ever. Together through the unique model of tri-sponsorship, we are positioned to collaborate in order to achieve the Youth Assistance mission to strengthen families and reduce the incidence of delinquency, neglect, and abuse through community involvement. We want to take this opportunity to thank you for joining with the Circuit Court Family Division in providing this unique and award-winning program that has been serving Oakland County since 1953. Your contribution, whether it is to refer for casework services, to provide individualized treatment plans, or deliver community-based prevention programming, is key to preventing young people and their families from penetrating the juvenile justice system. Together, we make Oakland County a safer place to live, work, and play. Thank you. And it's signed by the Chief Circuit Court Judge, the Presiding Judges of the Family Division. And I just want to acknowledge the city's long-time support and individual councilmembers, past and present, who support us as well. And I could relay several instances where Youth Assistance involvement has been very, very beneficial to situations in youth. If I told them I'd get all choked up and have a hard time finishing with some of these situations, but just know that it indeed does make a difference. And again, thank you for all your support.
Well, thank you, Pete, for your support, years of volunteering and support and leading, time in leading and helping that organization, because it wouldn't be the same without you and the rest of the folks who worked tirelessly to make all of that happen. So thank you as well. And make sure you please relay that to the rest of the group. Thank you, Pete.
Good evening, council. I'm Charlie Cavella, County Commissioner. So. I'm sorry for not calling ahead. All right. So I want to give a couple of quick updates about what the county's been doing and take any questions for y'all or for the conversation offline, however you see fit. So first, talking infrastructure. Now that the Infrastructure and Jobs Act from federal legislation of $1.2 trillion is starting to trickle into states and trickle into more local governments, the county is beginning to think more proactively and earnestly about what we can do with infrastructure. So I've been trying to lift up getting rid of basement flooding. So we're making some headway. We have some good allies, but would love any feedback on that as you see fit. Second, talking about seniors. The county has finished and published, as of a couple months ago, a healthy aging blueprint. So this is supposed to be what happens when our baby boomers retire, think about downsizing, aging in place, moving to Florida or Arizona or other places that have lower taxes. How can we convince all of these people to stay here and thrive? How can we convince the seniors that are aging in lower and more modest incomes to have their basic needs being met, like chore services, which has been a big issue for senior residents? I'm sure you know. And then also just think about how that all intertwines with housing in Oakland County. So again, if you have any input or advice on that, especially really to our community, please reach out. Right, because as you know in government, we did the report. So now we're kind of in that critical time between the report mattering and it just collecting dust on a shelf. So if we keep the energy up, we might actually do something. Third thing out of five, housing. Last week, Oakland County passed two packages of resolutions that invest $17 million upfront and $2 million a year in making sure housing, particularly for middle-class families and people trying to age in place and the housing is secure, are able to stay in Oakland County, or if they're moving around within Oakland County, can afford it here. So it's a big thing. Would love to talk to you for hours about that, because I was championing that. Childcare. I was just talking to someone today at the county. We did a childcare pilot program, just to brag, that I was the sponsor of. That was $1.2 million to help 1,000 families with children to try and return to the workforce or level up their education, because as we know, thanks to COVID, in Michigan, over 200,000 women dropped out of the workforce and 60,000 men dropped out of the workforce. So trying to correct that. This childcare pilot program began, and now the take-up has been so significant that we want to expand it. So some of the things we've been thinking about is before and after-school care, or is summer camp's coming around the corner. I know all you parents know. And I'm not a parent, but as an uncle, it makes me not want to be a parent, you know, like $2,000 to spend for summer camp, and that's like to do YMCA summer. It's just, oof, hats off to all you with kids. So we're trying to make sure that that is more affordable for middle-class families, because there are subsidies for people that make, you know, a certain level below. But then there isn't anything for middle-class families that just otherwise wouldn't be able to afford, like, high-quality childcare. So we want to make sure we're meeting that middle, that missing middle, I guess you could call it. And then the last thing, we've heard about this thing from San Antonio about a mental health crisis response unit. So we're working with the sheriff and trying to get any local law enforcement feedback on this model, because the Oakland County Sheriff's Office and us have been trying to figure out how to make sure this could be deployed in the most efficient way. But we need local law enforcement's feedback, so we don't mess it up. So I will follow up offline with all of you or take your comments as you see fit.
Thank you, Mr. Commissioner, for being with us and keeping us updated. It's certainly great to hear all the things that are happening in the county. And yes, we will certainly be following up with you on all of those items, especially some in particular, like number one. And we're going to spend some more quality time together talking about that. But thank you for being here and giving us an update.
Okay.
All right. Seeing nobody else jumping up to the microphone, we will end the public comments, and we'll move to this evening's order of business. First up is our consent agenda. Ms. Mitchell, would you like to take a sip of water and then read the items on tonight's consent agenda?
One, approval of the minutes. Matter of approving the minutes of the 39th regular city council meeting on Monday, April 4th, 2022. Two, warrant. Matter of approving warrant number 1373. Three, motion number M3822. Matter of approving the 2022 summer maintenance agreement between the Road Commission for Oakland County and the City of Berkeley. The city will be reimbursed a total of $1,680, which will be paid in two installments, $1,092 due in September 2022, and $588 due upon completion of the last maintenance activity. Four, proclamation number P922. Matter proclaiming the 150th anniversary of Arbor Day and designated designating the week of Sunday, April 24th, through Saturday, April 30th, 2022, as Arbor Week. Five, proclamation number P1022. Matter proclaiming May 2022 as Berkeley History Month. Six, proclamation number P1122. Matter proclaiming May 2022 as Motorcycle Awareness Month. Seven, proclamation number P1222. Matter proclaiming May 2022 as Mental Health Awareness Month. Eight, proclamation number P1322. Matter proclaiming May 2022 as Building Safety Month.
Is there a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda?
So moved.
Support.
Motion made by Councilmember Baker with support from Councilmember Price. Are there any changes? Seeing none. You did a wonderful job. Ms. Mitchell, would you please call the roll?
Gavin.
Yes.
Hunnen.
Yes.
Price.
Yes.
Vilani.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
Terbrecht.
Yes. Now move on to our regular agenda. Ms. Mitchell, would you please read item number one?
Recognitions, presentations. Matter of any recognitions or presentations from the consent agenda?
Seeing none. We will move on to item number two, please.
Motion number M3922. Matter of approving the Berkeley Dads Club Opening Day Parade on Saturday, June 4th, 2022, at 10:00 a.m., beginning at Berkeley High School and concluding at Community Field Number One. Approval is conditional upon the submission of required items and documents prior to event dates. Council reserves the right to rescind the permit due to state and/or county health and pandemic protocols.
Is there a motion to approve M3922?
So moved.
Support.
Motion made by Councilmember Vilani with support from Councilmember Hunnen. Mr. Baumgartner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and good evening, everyone. This is a longstanding tradition in our community, and if we think really hard about baseball, maybe it'll be 80 degrees this weekend. But we have, we have our, the board president of the Dads Club is with us this evening. He's worked with the Public Safety Department on planning a safe parade route, and they've worked through several logistics that will keep players, coaches, and parents all safe as they triumphantly march from Catalpa, or from Berkeley High School down Catalpa and all the way to Community One Field for some of the festivities of the day. It has been, this application has been reviewed by all the applicable departments, and they all recommend approval. And then, as you notice in your packet here, Lieutenant Coburnick worked with on an event plan, and it goes through the background, summary, logistics, and areas of responsibility for the event day. So we know that we can provide a safe opportunity for this event return to the city.
All right. Mr. President, Mr. Schmidt, anything you'd like to add? I know you weren't planning on having to say anything, but if you do, you got to come up to the microphone. This is, this is official, official capacity.
I wasn't planning on talking, but the Moms Club is going to join us. They're just going to keep on going down the streets to their field, to merchants. But it's been a couple of years since we've been able to do this, and we're real excited to do it again. I mean, the kids are excited. We kind of put money away for the past couple of years that we'd normally spend on it, so that it could be bigger and better. And so this year is our 74th year. Next year, warn you, is 75. So we would like to do something pretty special. 75 years of staying in business right now is, is pretty good. So we thank you. Thanks. I really want to say thanks to Lieutenant Coburnick. He helped me a lot and made sure it went well with the planning. We appreciate you. Thank you.
Any questions from councilmembers for either our city manager or Mr. Schmidt while we have them? Well, for saving up, we might want to, we might want to save some of that from the last couple of years and use it next year for that big 75th anniversary, right?
Diamond jubilee, yeah.
Yeah, diamond jubilee. All right. Well, with no other questions, welcome. Officially, congratulations on your new role here. And we still will be honoring your predecessor at some point in the near future, Mr. Cooper, for all of his years as well. Seeing no additional questions or comments, Ms. Mitchell, would you please call the roll on M3922?
Hunnen.
Yes.
Price.
Yes.
Vilani.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
Gavin.
Yes.
Terbrecht.
Yes. Ms. Mitchell, would you please read item number three on tonight's agenda?
Resolution number R522. Matter of approving applicant for issuance of an on-premise liquor license under section 521A1B of 2006 PA 501, MCL 436.1521A1B. Applicant El Patio 3 LLC, 3052 12 Mile Road, Berkeley, Michigan.
Is there a motion to approve R0522?
So moved.
Support.
Motion made by Councilmember Gavin with support from Councilmember Vilani. Mr. Baumgartner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I eagerly await the opening of El Patio in the former Patrick J's facility. One way that they're going to make it even better than just having fantastic food is to also have the opportunity to serve some of their famous drinks and margaritas. In order to do that, and by virtue of being in the Downtown Development Authority District, they are able to apply for and receive with local approval a redevelopment license. And that is a special item that is really only offered from Berkeley inside our DDA district. So thankfully, they're going to be at one of the main core areas of it, and we've looked over this from the perspective of a public safety standpoint. It's been ushered through by our city clerk's office to make sure that they've been looked over. And even as of today, our city attorney was reviewing the applicability of the license itself. All signs point to a full recommendation for approval from our city council this evening. So we've brought this for your consideration on that. I believe we are represented by one of the applicants as well as here. Mr. Mayor?
Okay. Mr. Sterin, on the legal side, is there anything else that we want to bring to the discussion today?
Well, just there has been, as the city manager alluded to, there's some review and vetting of our
process.
our ordinance and our standards, which are quite dated. I'm comfortable from a legal standpoint with this moving ahead tonight, but I think it would behoove us to take a look at this ordinance, among all the ordinances that need to be taken a look at, just to, to update it, make sure that all the provisions are current, that our standards are well-designed for current times. And so that would just be my recommendation to do the council that we add that to our things-to-do list.
We don't have enough on there, so let's add more.
It's a multi-pager, I'm sure.
Okay. Does the applicant have anything they'd like to add?
Well, I would like to thank you for, you know, having us. And I would like to let you know that we've been in business 18 years. It's a family restaurant. And we saw Berkeley, and I was so excited. I never felt so excited about a place, and I saw the place, and I was like, I really want to be here. I told my husband, this is the place. We didn't want to have another business. We have three. And when I look at the place, I was like, I don't want another restaurant. But with your support, give us the opportunity. Yes, we want to be here many years, many more years. We've been 18 years since we opened the first one, and family's growing, so we're going to have more help too. It requires a lot of hours, but you know, if you like us here, we want to be here for a long time.
And just as a way of introducing yourself to all of the millions at home that are watching right now, could you please just tell everybody who you are?
I'm Maria Erica de la Paz.
All right.
I've been in the restaurant business since I was 13 and still love it. So yes, if you want Mexican food, go to Margaritas. I'd like to have your support.
There's one thing that if you've been reading any of the social media posts on our city over the last, I don't know, five, six, seven years, you came to the right place. Questions from council? Councilmember Price?
Yes. Maria, do you have a potential opening date in mind for your restaurant?
Well, we were hoping in May, not before 5th, because it gets pretty crazy. But yes, we were hoping sometime in May.
Thank you.
With your help, I hope to do it.
Councilmember Baker?
Thank you, Your Honor. And thank you for your interest in the city. I'm glad that you found that particular location to be attractive. And as the liaison to the DDA, I'm very enthusiastic that you're bringing some fresh energy to our downtown.
Yes, we're bringing all the seeds and boots from Mexico, so everything was ordered, and they're ready to ship, so we're excited for that.
Very cool. And then just as a clarification to our attorney here, so given your earlier comments about refreshing the ordinance and things, nothing in your, the imaginations of your refreshingness would run into any issues with what we're seeing here tonight, right? We think we're still on the, everything's okay?
That's correct.
Okay, excellent. Just wanted to clarify that. You're describing two different things. The applicant is A-OK, and we also want to tidy things up a little bit.
Right. Everything, there was nothing wrong with the application, just in the course of comparing the application with the ordinance. Find the ordinance, the application's fine, the ordinance can use some work.
Well, it's time for some spring cleaning then, so. And thank you, Your Honor.
We can go get margaritas after. Any other comments or questions from council?
And the good thing is that the state allows us to do carryout margaritas too, so, you know.
Just keeps getting better.
They still let us do it. You know, if you do that, then everybody can be, they can be home watching football, drinking a margarita.
We want to make sure people visit, visit the restaurant too.
You know, if it's too cold or, you know.
Snowing in April.
You're not feeling good, you know, just drive either.
It's good, it's good to have options. Thank you. And thank you for being with us this evening for all of the information, obviously, that was provided. It was a very complete, thorough application. And as the city attorney said, everything was in good order, which allows us to be able to make a decision without having to worry about potential technicalities or other issues. So thank you, and I think I can say this, welcome. We'll see officially in just a moment, but welcome to the city. We're very, very excited to have you here.
Thank you so much.
Ms. Mitchell, would you please call the roll on R0522?
Price.
Yes.
Vilani.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
Gavin.
Yes.
Hunnen.
Yes.
Terbrecht.
Yes. Okay, welcome. Ms. Mitchell, would you please read item number four, please?
Motion number M4D22. Matter of awarding the contract for the Kenmore and Cornwall Water Main and Pavement Replacement Project to the lowest qualified bidder, A.L.A. Construction, in an amount of $2,522,493.27. In addition, allocate $257,997.34 for construction engineering services to Hubbell, Roth, and Clark, and $252,249.33 for construction contingencies.
Is there a motion to approve M4022?
So moved.
Support.
Motion made by Councilmember Price with support from Councilmember Hunnen. Mr. Baumgartner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First and foremost, we would not even be this far before you this evening if not for the support that the residents of City of Berkeley showed by their votes back in 2018 when they passed the infrastructure millage. This project is a direct result of that, of our ability to invest those funds right into the community. So thank you for that. There are a number of things that's to be said about this project. As we've been checking in throughout, we've been updating council, and we've had conversations even here at some of our meetings about this project, about the scope, about some of the outreach opportunities that we've had to discuss with our own residents and those that are in the footprint there. But since there is so much to be said about this project, we are this evening joined by the contractor, Eddie Zimich, from HRC, as well as our DPW Director, Sean Young, as well as our interim Assistant DPW Director, Rick Chalmers. And so they can come up and answer some of the questions on council. You do have in your packet a very full explanation, memo, as well as bid documents, and some information about the scope of this project as well. So again, we don't get to do a lot of these projects very often, so we're excited about this particular one. This will be a full sidewalk-to-sidewalk reconstruction of Kenmore and Cornwall, about a half a mile stretch between those two streets. So we're excited to get to this point, sir.
Mr. Director? Eddie, want to come up with me? Are you going to hang out there? It's up to you. Roland knows I'd make him talk, so.
So what we have here is the actual award for the job. Kenmore Cornwall, we've been talking about that for quite a while now, a lot of meetings, a lot of town hall meetings, getting a lot of residents' input. Eddie's been through spec books and checked the references, and HRC's recommendation is to award to the low bidder, A.L.A.
Any questions from council for our director or HRC? And obviously, we have, as mentioned, spent some time talking about this. Councilmember Hunnen?
Yeah. First, when should we expect the project to start, and, you know, when should it be substantially finished?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council. How you doing? Good to see everybody again. So did you want any more background on the project? Obviously, Mr. Baumgartner and Sean Young already come up with a lot of the background and the project and how we got here. This, this, this is very similar to the Harvard Road project, which you remember has been at least five years now. This project is very similar to that, meaning it's right-of-way to right-of-way, all driveways, sidewalks, curb, gutter, roadway, water main, and then some sewer improvements as well. The cross-sections is very similar as well. If you recall, the way, and this was back with Derek and Sean over the years, how we came up with these programs and the priorities, is to look at basically the PESA ratings of the road. This was obviously one of the poorest-rated roads, these sections, and then, of course, water main break frequency and other issues, pressure issues with the water main. So those two are the main items to make a priority project, basically. So this was the next in line. Obviously, Harvard was the first one five years ago. That was pre-millage, of course. So the project this time, the scope is, again, is very, very similar, very much the same. The project goals are, again, very similar to what last time, approving the water main. If you recall, something that has changed since the Harvard Road project as well is the lead service line issue with the state, meaning now if there is a lead line encountered, the city does have to, I'm sorry, let's back up. We're replacing all the services from the main to the curb box, including the curb box. If at that point, lead or galvanized, because it can be galvanized as well, is encountered, at that point, the contractor has to replace the rest of the private side of the water service from the box to the house meter. And so they'll have to gain access to the home. And that is something that, it's a non-fundamental mandate, as you know, but that's what all cities have to do. But there are a certain number that you have to do each year, so this project, actually, you may be able to knock out some if we do encounter them. But it is something that has changed since the last project. As far as the start, actually, I appreciate A.L.A. coming out here today. If you have any questions, they will be available. I was discussing with them, one of the major topics, which has been on almost every project we've had this year thus far, and that's material shortage and delays. So one of the main issues, or the items that contractors are having, and this is across the board, I've got many projects that are having the same issue as finding, unfortunately, ductile iron water main. Eight-inch, 12-inch, it doesn't matter the size. But they do have the water main on order, the majority of it, but it's not going to be main on order, the majority of it, but it's not going to be, um, ready for the city, it won't be here till about mid-June or so. Meaning the project, you know, originally we had hoped maybe we could start sometime in May. Um, at this point, we're gonna need to push that to probably maybe the second week of June or so. You know, they have some preliminary work to do, saw cutting, mobilization, uh, and this, and the like, but they're not gonna start removing pavement until we actually have the water main, 'cause obviously we don't wanna be making holes and all of a sudden there's another delay shortage and we're waiting many more weeks and we've got open pavement, so, um, that is unfortunate, but again, this is happening, uh, a majority, almost all of our projects where we've got, uh, in particular ductile iron water main, but even other, um, materials of, of water and sewer pipe as well, have, we've had issues. Um, so I just wanna be upfront about that, that the project will have to start a little bit later because of that. Um, they do still feel, and again, this is weather permitting and we are in Michigan, as we all said, um, if, if we get a lot of rain this year, that could impact the, the, the schedule, um, but they, they do feel at this point, they still be able to get the project done by the end of the year, and, and what typically happens on most projects, especially a project this size, is oftentimes the restoration is, is finalized the following spring, um, 'cause if it's that late in the year, nothing's really gonna take growth, so they would just make sure that they'd fill all the holes, topsoil, and just have it ready to do final restoration come spring. Um, of course, if we get good weather and, uh, everything's going well, there's still a chance the project could be completed by the end of the year, but, uh, again, it's, it's, um, we've got a couple factors here, we've got material issues, um, and then possibly weather, but, you know, that's, we'll see, and so.
Okay. Councilmember Price?
Yes, thank you. Um, you mentioned the supply issue, and I'm curious if we need to be concerned about increased, uh, costs. Do the construction contingencies that we see in front of us, would that cover an increased cost in the lines that we'd be waiting for?
Well, so, so first of all, the, the bid unit prices are, are, are to be held by the contractor, so no matter what happens after a project begins, I mean, the bid prices are there, so they have to abide by those unit prices. Now, we also always have contingencies in a project, and that wouldn't be for upcharges on materials, but it's for, if additional things happen, extending circumstances, um, you know, that's what, or additional quantities even, uh, for certain items, you know, but it's not for a change in unit price.
Thank you.
Councilmember Baker?
Uh, thank you, Your Honor, and thank you, uh, thank you both and, and hello back there for, uh, for all your, um, support, um, leading to tonight and then going forward. Uh, just a quick question about the, the continued resident engagement, so I know we've had a couple of town halls and some opportunities to receive feedback and, and make some adjustments to the, the structure of the program based on, um, the residents there. Um, could you describe a little bit of the going-forward position, to the, the degree to which we'll be continuing to stay in contact with residents and keeping them posted about, hey, you know, next week something's gonna happen and, you know, things like that, just so there's no surprises on the resident front?
Sure. So, as you're probably familiar, HRC always puts out news of your neighborhood flyers for every project, we typically put it out before a project starts, then we put it, um, distribute them at milestone dates, um, and then, of course, if there's any water shutdown, uh, the homeowners will also get, uh, door hangers that they put on the door a day before to make sure they understand that, okay, tomorrow you're gonna lose water from eight AM to twelve, or eight to four, whatever the case may be, we'll have that spelled out and we actually will knock on the door as well to, to try to, uh, talk to the resident there, and that doesn't always happen, so we, we leave a door hanger if not, and then the morning of, they try to follow up again, um, with, with the residents there to make sure they understand about the water. As far as the construction schedule, again, we'd be putting the flyers out, flyers will be on your website and your Facebook pages at all times for any updates. I know the city does have, uh, email distribution list, and I believe, and, and maybe Matt could, um, test, or maybe Tori would know better, but we do have, I think, majority of the emails from the people within this, uh, construction limits, and of course, if that's not the case, we of course encourage those residents to contact the city, and then again, we could put them on the email distribution list like we would for sidewalk programs and, and the like, so, so there will be, um, a lot of notifications and coordination with the residents.
Excellent, thank you, and then as long as there's, um, some, um, contact information in case somebody has a question or a way to reach out to, to you folks, I'm imagining that's gonna be included in the materials?
Yep, so our flyers in the bottom will always have, um, we try to keep the city out, but we try to handle everything we can in the field or through our office, so we'll have our observer on site, of course, at all times, and they'll have a number on there as well, my number will be on there, and then the, um, ILE's number will be on there as well, um, so i- if they can't contact someone in the field or, or know who to talk to, there, there are a few numbers that they will be able to, to call to get ahold of some.
Excellent, thank you again.
Thank you, additional questions?
One more, I think this one's for Director Young. Um, with the lead service lines, are you still asking residents who believe that they have a lead service line to reach out to DPW to let, let you know?
Definitely.
Okay, and how do they do that?
Go down in the basement, look, the pipe's going usually before the meter, usually in our, through the floor, through the wall, um, take a picture of that, send it to us at Public Works at Berkeley Mission on that, and we can help identify that. Um, that's probably the easiest way, if we're not sure on the picture, we'll send someone out and they'll physically come verify. But, the sooner we know that information, the easier it is for us. Um, and it's not just that project, it's citywide, so if you get on that list and, and if it's one that needs to be changed out, we can get it changed out.
Fantastic, thank you.
All right, well, seeing no, um, additional questions, I, I do wanna thank Eddie, our representatives from ILE Construction as well for being with us, uh, and Eddie certainly, uh, for representing HRC. As was talked about, this is not a project, uh, that just, just popped up, we've been talking about this for a while and had, uh, significant conversations with residents, especially residents who will be, uh, impacted in the short term during construction, um, and hopefully will be very proud of what the road looks like after, as happened on Harvard, but, uh, that's what ultimately finally brought us to this point where we were able to move forward, was all of those conversations, 'cause there were a lot of things that needed to, uh, to be discussed. So I wanna thank all of the residents, um, who were engaged and who went to the town hall meetings and who came to our meetings to express, um, concerns, have questions, get all of those things answered so that we can get to a point where we can, uh, talk about it and council can actually make a decision, uh, knowing that everybody has been heard and had an opportunity to discuss. So I wanna thank, uh, everybody, city staff, certainly that was involved in making sure that the residents had opportunities, um, to voice their potential concerns and get questions answered. Seeing no additional questions up here, is there any additional comments? Anybody else visiting today? Okay. Oh, I thought Teresa was gonna come up for a second there.[1057.33][1057.33][laughter] That was just a trick, okay, all right. Uh, seeing none, Ms. Mitchell, then would you please call the roll on M. 4022?
Vilani?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Henan?
Yes.
Price?
Yes.
Turbrak?
Yes. Ms. Mitchell, would you please read item number five?
Public hearing, matter of holding a public hearing for comments regarding the reprogramming of 2020 prior-year CDBG funds in the amount of $25,692. This reprogramming will remove architectural barriers in our city parks by creating ADA access.
Before I open the public hearing, Mr. Baumgarten, would you like to give some, uh, some background?
Yes, sir. Uh, this is the first of four related items this is coming before the council this evening. Uh, because we're working with Community Development Block Grant Funds, that's a federally-funded program, there are a very strict set of rules and procedures that we need to follow in order to make sure that we are as transparent and po- as possible in how we use those funds. Uh, as we mentioned at the last meeting, we had to set the public hearing in advance of actually holding them, uh, we were able to, uh, publicize them fully consistent with, uh, the federal guidelines, uh, and even this evening, uh, you see the, there's a number of different memos, uh, before you on, on how exactly we plan to use those. Essentially, for, uh, both of these two items, the goal does not change, uh, in both cases, we're looking to remove architectural barriers. What we are changing in this scenario is the where. Uh, we, we had a couple of different intersections that we had targeted for, um, improving or for, uh, the addition of the tactile pavers, uh, which give a, um, a feeling that an intersection is coming for the visually impaired. Uh, those are certainly a, an ongoing program that we have and an emphasis area for us, uh, but as of right now, our need is a little bit greater within our parks, uh, in order to remove some architectural barriers there, uh, and in this case, it's to approve some park pathways, um, in a couple of different various places. So, each year, we're allocated a specific amount of money for the 2020 program year, as the motion says, it's $25,692. Um, so we're, or, uh, advertising and, and holding a public hearing to fully move those into a park project, uh, and for 2020, and, uh, in a bit, we'll talk about the 2021 program year, but these have to be kept absolutely separate and they have to be moved separately through their own individualized process.
All right, well, thank you for that. Um, with that background, I will open the public hearing at 7:40 PM, standard Eastern Time.[1224.41][1224.41][laughter] If you'd like to comment, uh, please feel free to come up to the microphone, uh, state your name, city of residence, and give us your comments. And if nobody does anything, we're gonna be sitting here for 26 more seconds, just to make sure everybody has an opportunity. Hmm. Getting close.
Really regretting that new clock right now.[1248.01][1248.01][laughter]
Wonderful, otherwise I would just be guessing.[1251.73][1251.73][laughter] All right, seeing nobody coming to the microphone, I will close the public hearing at 7:41 PM, and Ms. Mitchell, we will move on to item number six, please.
Motion number M. 4122, matter of approving the reprogramming of 2020 prior-year CDBG funds in the amount of $25,692 to remove architectural barriers for park path improvements to meet ADA standards.
Is there a motion to approve M. 4122?
So moved.
Support.
Moved by Councilmember Gavin, supported by Councilmember Baker. Mr. Baumgarten, anything else?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I, I, again, just kinda going through the rules here, uh, it, not enough just to have a public hearing for it, uh, the action itself requires, uh, the approval of the city council, so that's why they appear before you with separate agenda items.
Well, thank you for the background and seeing as though we did not have a, a huge, um, turnout for the public hearing, or at least concern, uh, in the public hearing council, are there any questions additionally for the city manager? Yes, okay, all right, almost had a public hearing. Go ahead.
Oh, thank you, Your Honor, just a quick question in terms of timing, do we have any indications of when we may be able to execute, um, the, um, the usage of these funds to, to make those enhancements? Do we think that's a, a calendar year 22 kind of thing, or, um, any, any additional, any initial ideas that you may be able to offer for us tonight?
Sure, our first opportunity will be agenda item number nine, uh, and we'll be actually be able to put those funds into the Kiwanis Totlot project.
Perfect.
It'll be our first opportunity.
So it's a little bit of a foreshadowing coming up here?
Indeed, sir.
Nice, excellent.
Councilmember Henan?
Well, that was my question as well.
Okay, all right. Well, seeing no additional questions and knowing that we're still gonna have more to come this evening, uh, Ms. Mitchell, would you please call the roll on M. 4122?
Baker?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Henan?
Yes.
Price?
Yes.
Vilani?
Yes.
Turbrak?
Yes. Ms. Mitchell, would you please read item number seven on tonight's agenda?
Public hearing, matter of holding a public hearing for comments regarding the reprogramming of 2021 prior-year CDBG funds in the amount of $26,230. This reprogramming simply adds Kiwanis Totlot to the location description of the Berkeley Parks included for creating ADA accessible ramps and paths.
Mr. Baumgarten?
Mr. Mayor, this is a very descriptive motion. Uh, I think it outlines quite clearly, uh, what we, what we do here, uh, with the same explanation as the pre- two previous items.
All right, oh, this is good, we're gonna open the public hearing at 7:43. If you would like to comment, uh, please feel free to come up to the microphone, state your name, city of residence, and give us your feedback, uh, on the potential reprogramming. Going once, twice, sold. Public hearing will close at 7:44, and we will move on to item number eight, please, Ms. Mitchell.
Motion number M. 4222, matter of approving the reprogramming of 2021 prior-year CDBG funds in the amount of $26,230 to add Kiwanis Totlot to the City of Berkeley Park locations to remove architectural barriers for park path improvements to meet ADA standards.
Is there a motion to approve M. 4222?
So moved.
Support.
Motion made by Councilmember Vilani with support from Councilmember Price. Mr. Baumgarten?
I appreciate you to the finance department, uh, who, who does the, the bulk of the work for this in conjunction with, uh, in this case, our, our Parks and Recreation staff, it takes quite a bit of oversight and back and forth with the, uh, county administrators of the federal program, and so we work in harmony with them, and, uh, it's a, it's a good project for all involved.
All right, any additional questions from the council? Really beating this horse, okay. Uh, Ms. Mitchell, would you please call the roll on M. 4222?
Gavin?
Yes.
Henan?
Yes.
Price?
Yes.
Vilani?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Turbrak?
Yes. Ms. Mitchell, would you please read item number nine on tonight's agenda?
Motion number M. 4322, matter of awarding the contract for Kiwanis Totlot CDBG sidewalk replacement at a cost not to exceed $34,513.61 to the lowest qualified bidder, JSS McComb LLC, 11858 Forest Glen Lane, Shelby Township, Michigan, 48315. In addition, allocate $3,451.63 for construction contingencies and $12,746.66 for engineering services to Hubbell, Roth, and Clark.
Is there a motion to approve M. 4322?
So moved.
Support.
Motion made by Councilmember Baker with support from Councilmember Henan. Mr. Baumgarten?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, uh, we went through a bidding process for this, as we are required to do, by the same standards that we've been talking about for the last four agenda items. Uh, Teresa McCarlton, as well as Eddie Zimich worked together to, uh, review the bids and go, uh, make sure that, uh, everybody had, uh, provided the proper documentation needed in order to move forward on this. Uh, I will note, for the purposes of transparency, that in the course of, of the conversation, I found out I actually have a, a distant relative that is involved in this particular company, although, as said, I was not part of the vetting process, but, uh, um, wanted to note that for transparent, transparency purposes. Uh, other than that, Director McCarlton is here to talk about the benefits of the project.
Director?
Good evening.
Welcome.
Uh, so we're excited to bring to you, uh, this project today, it's the first that we see, but I hope to be before you in the years to come, uh, talking about other parks, and that's why we're going through this process. Uh, again, just for a little bit of background, uh, the Community Development Director and myself, uh, just a little over a year ago, started meeting with the county, laying out what we wanted to do in terms of, um, creating better access and, uh, improving the ADA standards in our parks. Um, we were able to get approval through the county, um, that this was a good use of Community Development Block Grant Funds, uh, which was very exciting news to us. Um, it will, for some of our parks, take a little bit longer to build up, we might need to have two different years, 'cause we only receive a certain amount, um, but for this park, because it is just the walkway through the park, it was a good place to start. So what we're starting with is, again, basically what the project says, removal of the wood chips and doing a six-foot, uh, concrete walkway. Uh, it will enter the park where you enter now, but there's gonna be a little, uh, curb out so that it's away from the play equipment. We worked with HRC to develop, um, this, and, uh, as the city manager stated, we did receive four bids for this, two of the bids were qualified bids, there was an addendum that, uh, two of the companies, uh, failed to, uh, enter, so we are going with the lowest qualified bid, as is standard practice for the city. Um, HRC has checked their references, we're excited to get this project started. We're excited to get this project started. Right now, we're looking at a three- to four-week timeline before the project starts, and then typically, a project of this size takes about two to three weeks. So right now, that has us starting sometime in mid-May, and then the project concluding sometime in early June. One of the things that we did discuss with the company was whether or not the park would have to be closed during this time. Because it is such a small park, and because of where the walkway is, there's just not a really great, safe way to continue having the park open, so we will have to close the park during that time. We'll have a lot of communication on that. We'll have signs there. We will have, obviously, protective safety fencing as well, and happy to answer any questions that you may have, as well as Eddie Zimich from HRC.
Questions for our Parks and Rec Director. Councilmember Price?
Yes, thank you, Director McCarlton, and thank you for making our parks more accessible. I was just wondering if you could speak briefly on what are some of the architectural barriers that are in place now, and how will this work make our parks more accessible?
Sure, it's a great question. So one of the things that I think of right off the bat is one of the things that's, there's only on-street parking at this park, which is true of Berkeley, a lot of Berkeley parks, and even if we do have parking, a lot of times it's taken up. So street parking, and here, there's no curb cut for anybody that maybe is using, whether it's a walker, or just has trouble stepping over, or in a wheelchair, or some sort of physical challenge, so curb cuts will be added. And the other thing is technically engineered wood fiber, which is what those wood chips are, that's the official name for it, is considered ADA accessible, but realistically, it's really difficult to push anything through that, or even to walk on it. And so adding the concrete will mean that it makes it a much more accessible walkway. It makes it much more accessible to, we're going to, you know, picnic tables that are near there, benches that are near there, and then the playground equipment that is, that will be near all of it.
Excellent, so someone with mobility issues will be able to better access the picnic tables as well as?
Absolutely, yep. We plan to have some rate off of the walkway.
Wonderful, thank you for your work.
Additional questions or comments? Eddie, anything you'd like to add? I mean, we have the best dressed member of HRC here.
I mean, it's a pretty simple project. I mean, obviously, we were in touch with Teresa the whole way, and, you know, we came up with a couple of different designs. We decided on the one that was bid out accordingly. JSS Macomb has done a lot of similar projects. We know of a few in Macomb County that we actually referenced here. Yeah, I don't really have anything else to add. It should be a pretty straightforward project, and I guess the biggest thing is just coordination and letting the people know, residents know when it will be closed temporarily, so.
Well, thank you for providing that and for being with us. Seeing no additional questions, Ms. Mitchell, then would you please call the roll on M4322?
Gavin?
Yes.
Henin?
Yes.
Price?
Yes.
Vilani?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Turbrack?
Yes. Ms. Mitchell, would you please read item number 10, please?
Motion Number M4422, matter of awarding the contract for Angel Ball Field and exterior fencing at a cost not to exceed $34,883 to the lowest qualified bidder, Gem Fencing LLC, 444 East Gallagher Road, West Branch, Michigan, 48661. In addition, allocate $3,488.30 for construction contingencies.
Is there a motion to approve M4422?
So moved.
Support.
Motion made by Councilmember Gavin with support from Councilmember Vilani. Mr. Baumgarten?
Thanks, Mayor. In addition to great pathways, one of the other ways in which Teresa and her staff make our parks that much better is to, in this case, literally mend fences, and, well, full-scale replacement, anyway. On the Angel Ball Field, this is a fence I'm sure you can imagine is needing a repair. Anyone who's looked at it as of late, we jointly own this property with the school, and the school has agreed to pitch in for a portion of this project as well. So as noted in the memo from the director, we went through the normal bidding process on this as well, just like we do with each of our projects, and come to you before, come before you this morning, this evening, with the lowest qualified bidder.
Ms. McCarlton?
Yeah, so as the city manager said, if you look at the fence, if you have eyes and can see it, you know that it needs replacement. It's become uns, not only unsightly, but unsafe. And this was part of our capital improvement project. Originally, the city had set aside funds to replace just the outfield ball field fencing. We did do the bid in two different divisions, so we had an option to just replace that, or to also replace the full exterior along Cummings and Bacon that run the school length. And as the city manager said, this property is a little bit funny, a little different than some of our other schools, because the city and the school worked together to maintain this property and have since 1979, I believe there's an 80-year lease on the property that the, that the city has with the school district. So this will be replacing the outfield fencing, the six-foot fencing that you see there, which is going to be great for the actual ball field, but it's also going to be replacing the exterior. I have spoken with the school district, they're very excited about this project. I know the city manager has spoken with them as well. I think it's good that we're working with them on this. They also are aware of the timing, which the project, according to the contractor, is supposed to begin a third or fourth week of May again, and then this project is only supposed to take anywhere from five to 10 days. It's not a long project, it's pretty simple, tearing out the fencing that's there now and replacing it. We're not adding or really changing a whole lot, but again, very necessary part of our capital improvements, and just another way that we're trying to update our spaces and keep them safe and looking nice.
Well, thank you. Questions for our Director?
Yeah, I mean, I, certainly if you have not walked past Angel, I have the opportunity to see it almost twice a day at this point, and there are a lot of places where it's kind of held together with what appear to be zip ties or some sort of wire ties, and certainly it was in the plan, and now we're able to execute on the replacement of that fence. So thank you, Teresa, for bringing this together and allowing us to have this conversation, and certainly thank you to the school district, who continues to be great partners with us in the city, especially on this unique property as it relates to most of our city parks.
And if I can add, we did receive four qualified bids, all pretty relatively close in price. The company that we are awarding it, actually under a different name for different reasons, has done work in the city before and did a great job, and still are many of the same people, so we're excited to work with them again.
Excellent, well, thank you, Teresa. Seeing no additional questions or comments, Ms. Mitchell, would you please call the roll on M4422?
Henin?
Yes.
Price?
Yes.
Vilani?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Turbrack?
Yes. Ms. Mitchell, would you please read item number 11?
Motion Number M4522, matter of appointing the Finance Director, Mark Pollak, as the City of Berkeley's representative, and the Public Works Director, Sean Young, as the alternate representative to the Southeastern Oakland County Resource Recovery Authority, SACRA Board of Trustees for the remainder of the fiscal year ending on June 30, 2022, and instruct the city clerk to send a copy of this motion to the SACRA Board.
Is there a motion to approve M4522?
So moved, Your Honor.
Support.
Motion made by Councilmember Baker with support from Councilmember Henin. Mr. Baumgarten, as we make this real for our new Director, anything else that you would like to add?
Ms. Mayor, just would like to note that I have been the alternate to this. I was previously backing up our DPW Director to this board. There's a standing conflict. SACRA meets the same time as the DDA Board meetings, and so Mr. Pollak has previous experience from his days in Clausen as a representative of this board, so he and Sean Young together will make a dynamic duo. We will be, we'll come back before you at the last meeting in June to update for the new year. We may change, we may flip-flop those roles, but as of now, the plan is for the two of them to attend these board meetings together each month, and really just knock them dead that way.
Hey, Mr. Director, would you like to speak now or forever hold your peace?
I'm, I guess I'm looking forward. Everything you need to know about trash.
Somebody needs to, and we certainly think that you and Mr. Pollak will be tremendous representatives to the city. I didn't, you didn't actually have to come up and say anything, I was more just giving you some, some early, you know, new Director hazing up here, coming up, making me say something up here. But no, I appreciate it, and Sean, obviously, you know, I was going to mention this at the end, but in my communications, might as well now. One, I want to congratulate you on your new role as Director, and Rick Tomers as well, and your new role, you know, Derek has moved on. I was going to say no longer with us, but that doesn't, I don't want, I don't want people to think he's, he's moved, yeah, I don't know how to say it without making it sound like he's passed. He's not. Derek spent, spent 10 years with, with the City of Berkeley, and obviously did a tremendous job, not only with what he had, what he was able to do, but also with the team, and that certainly included you, Sean, Rick, the entire team over there. Our Department of Public Works is incredibly well-respected, not only in our city, but of course throughout the state and throughout the country in many aspects, from conferences and other things that our department has been asked to attend. So I want to thank Derek for the 10 years, which is a long time in that world to be in one municipality. And Sean, I'm incredibly excited to have you now as our Director. There are very, very few folks in the city that know it as well as you, and that's going to be an incredible asset, and Rick, really looking forward to, to you now assuming the former role that Sean held, although we're changing it now so that it makes a little bit more sense for how the organization is structured. And, and a lot of that, Sean, is because of what you brought to the table in your former role as what used to be called the form, and it's certainly far more than that. And so the way that the department is now structured is much better representative of what you both bring and what the entire Department of Public Works does in our community. So I just wanted to formally welcome you and congratulate both you and Rick on the new roles in the city.
Thank you.
Excellent, excellent, okay. Well, you can hang out right there for a minute. Ms. Mitchell, would you like to, or would you please call the roll on M4522?
Price?
Yes.
Vilani?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Henin?
Yes.
Turbrack?
Yes. Ms. Mitchell, would you please read item number 12 on tonight's agenda?
Motion Number M4622, matter of appointing the Finance Director, Mark Pollak, as the City of Berkeley's representative, and the Public Works Director, Sean Young, as the alternate representative to the Southeastern Oakland County Water Authority, SACWA, Board of Trustees for the remainder of the fiscal year ending on June 30, 2022, and instruct the city clerk to send a copy of this motion to the SACWA Board.
Is there a motion to approve M4622?
So moved.
Support.
Motion made by Councilmember Henin with support from Councilmember Price. Mr. Baumgarten, let's talk about water this time.
Sure, thank you, Ms. Mayor. What SACRA is to trash recycling, SACWA is to water. It is a number of different local municipalities binding together to enhance our purchasing power and our influence over commodity prices and rate increases. So once again, we can't think of a better dynamic duo than Mr. Pollak and Mr. Young to be our voices on this important body.
Anything else you'd like to add, Mr. Director?
Oh, nothing at this time. I mean, I, I know a lot of these, a lot of these are coworkers in other municipalities, but.
Nothing at this time, that's, that's going to be good, that's going to be important for you, say that multiple times in the future. Any questions from council or comments? No, all right, seeing none, let's make this officially official. Ms. Mitchell, would you please call the roll on M4622?
Vilani?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Henin?
Yes.
Price?
Yes.
Turbrack?
Yes, thank you, thank you. We now move to communications. Ms. Mitchell?
Councilmember Baker.
Councilmember Baker, please lead us off.
Hey, that's me. Well, happy Monday, everybody, for those of you watching in real time. The Historical Committee, we will talk a little bit more about Berkeley History Month in May, when that comes up, but that was on our consent agenda. The committee met on Tuesday, April 12, and they're beginning to work on the design of the next edition of the collectible mug. Those of you that have been following along at home and acquiring these things, they have these really cool collectible mugs that are limited runs. The plan is to feature unique Berkeley restaurants of days gone by, so the restaurants, not big franchises, but things unique to the city that, that now you'll be able to admire as you sip your coffee in the morning. And the team is also preparing to catalog museum items into a software package. It's an industry-standard software package called PassPerfect, and what this will do is enable the committee to better archive the materials that we have available for the public, be able to understand and access where those materials are at any given moment, and share that information more readily with the public. So really excited about the progress with that, and kudos to the volunteers for their, for undertaking the learning curve to embrace this new technology platform. And visitors are always welcome to the museum. The museum is open on Wednesdays from 10 o'clock in the morning until 1 o'clock in the afternoon, and on Sundays from 2 till 4. And for more information, you can visit them online at BerkeleyHistory.com. Our Downtown Development Authority, DDA, their Board of Directors met the very next day on Wednesday, April 13, at 8:30 in the morning, and as part of the budget preparation process, they voted to, to recommend their draft 2022-23 budget for council review as part of the process that'll be coming up in May, so that's super exciting. They reviewed several additionally exciting mural and facade grant applications. There's several really great ideas and plans that are in the works to continue to help spruce up our beautiful downtown, and that's, that's always great to see. And they're beginning the preparations for the next batch of upcoming downtown block party events, where we cordon off a specific portion of the downtown and have a festival or some kind of fun thing. The dates are May 1, June 26, and October 29. So we'll have more information on that through social media and, and through the, and through the website, which is DowntownBerkeley.com. And it was Albert Einstein, now this guy's, he's kind of got it together, right? He's a pretty smart dude. He says, "The hardest thing to understand in the world is the income tax." And, you know, for those of you, you may not know, you know, today is Tax Day for, for federal and state taxes, and if you're working on those right now in real time as you're watching this, well, you've got a head start on me. But as a quick reminder, city taxes are on a, on a different schedule. It's a summer/winter schedule, and just wanted to help, again, remind us all that for every dollar you pay on your city taxes, only 36 cents goes to help support the City of Berkeley's offerings, including our public safety and DPW, and Parks and Rec, and library, and municipal services and things like that. The rest of that is allocated across the school district, the state education, to the county, to the OCC, to SMART, the zoo, and the DIA, among others. So if you want to know what we are going to be doing with that 36 cents on the dollar, I would certainly encourage you to, to attend the Berkeley budget hearings that are coming up in May, just as we kind of use that as the on-ramp to the Berkeley Days festivities, so that'll be a lot of fun. So please, everybody, stay safe out there and hug somebody you love, it's really important. Thank you, have a good night.
Thank you, Councilmember Baker. Councilmember Price?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Turbrack. My kids keep telling me that it is, in fact, spring despite the snow this afternoon, and for Berkeley kids, spring means longer days and lots of trips to the playgrounds where they get to explore, interact, and learn so much about the people and the world around them. As you may or may not know, our city's businesses and residents have a very unique opportunity right now. We can all pitch in and raise a total of $50,000 or more for a truly inclusive and accessible park, and if we can meet that $50,000 goal, our efforts will be doubled by the Michigan Economic Development Corporation, and we will have $100,000 to build an impressive showpiece and regional destination for inclusive play. When I asked my seven-year-old daughter why we need a fully inclusive playground in Berkeley, she said, "So that all of my friends and my future friends can play together," and I thought that sounded pretty good. So find more details on the banner at BerkeleyMish.org and add your name to the list of donors today. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Henin?
Yeah, first I just want to build on Councilmember Baker's comments on the mugs. I just by chance have my collection of city mugs. They happen to be in the background of my Zoom calls in my home office, and I'm surprised how many people have made positive comments on, you know, "Oh, what are those? Those are cool-looking," so just wanted to give a plug there.
Quite a mug shot, huh?
Oh, jeez.
Did you two plan that?
All right, from the Zoning Board of Appeals, they approved a 40-foot, square-foot sign for the House of Renewal Woodward, and then they'll be meeting on May 9 for two cases, one about parking and one concerning signs. The Tree Board, they next meet on May 25, but then on Saturday, April 30, at 10:00 AM, they'll be meeting at DPW for an arbor day tree planting with help of a local daisy troop. They'll be planting two trees. This is on the Phillips side of the DPW building between 12 Mile and Beverly. And then finally, now that COVID is letting up, I'm resuming my talk with Dennis events. The next one is going to be tomorrow, Tuesday, April 19, at the library, so people can stop by anytime between 6:00 and 8:00 PM with any questions or concerns you might have or want to share. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Gavin?
Thank you, Your Honor. Short comments from me, both the Environmental Advisory Committee and the Planning Commission have not met since our last council meeting, so just in terms of upcoming days, we got the EAC will meet this Thursday, the 21st, at 6:30, and the second at 6:30 in the second, on the second floor of the Public Safety Building. And then Planning Commission next meets on Tuesday, the 26th, at 7:00 p.m. here in council chambers. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Vilani?
The Berkeley Area Chamber and TAC have not met since our last meeting. They both actually have meetings coming up this week. But a few quick reminders from Berkeley Area Chamber. The Chamber is creating a Business Pass discount card that will be distributed to over 450 Berkeley School District staff in May. So they are encouraging our local businesses to consider offering a discount and supporting this new program. If you're interested, you can reach out to the Chamber. The deadline to participate is April 22nd, so that's coming up at the end of this week. The Berkeley Street Art Fest on July 16th is looking for sponsors, street food vendors, and wares to be sold in the Shop For Good Village. Once again, contact the Chamber if you are interested in participating. And for those of you out there going off to college, or maybe who have children going off to college, Vibe Credit Union has a FUSE scholarship for $2,000. There are 10 of them available, and applications are due on May 2nd.
Thank you. Mr. Baumgarten?
Thanks, Mayor. Just a fun little tidbit here. The DDA Director and I were able to meet with Representative from Mogo, and they do a number of really fun things at Mogo, but one of them is they have rides that they plot out for individuals that are interested. We found out in the course of the conversation that the number-two ride in all of the Mogo footprint was the Berkeley Mural Ride. And we were pretty excited about that. We lost second only to a brewery tour, so that's, that's pretty good, I would say. But Mogo, Mogo continues to be impressed by the ridership here. We are the northernmost set of stations that they have, but they see no drop-off. We've done a fantastic job of utilizing the service. Berkeley residents get out and get to ride their bikes on frequent occasions, so kudos to the community. And the only other thing I would say is that staff's been hard at work prepping for our budget. We look forward to our conversation on May 9th. And it's, it's no small feat to forecast for a year and a half in advance, but our staff has, has met that challenge and has, has made some difficult cuts and prioritizations, but we look forward to the conversation coming up.
Excellent. Thank you. Ms. Mitchell?
Yes, thank you. The city will be holding an election on Tuesday, May 3rd, 2022. The election is for residents of Berkeley and Royal Oak that are within the Berkeley School District. Those residents will see one proposal on the ballot, which is a Berkeley Schools non-homestead operating millage renewal. We do have sample ballots at the clerk's office, along with an FAQ sheet. And if any resident has any more in-depth further questions, they should feel free to contact Berkeley Public Schools directly. All precincts will be open on Election Day from 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m., and it's not too late to receive an absentee ballot, if that is how you choose to cast your vote. Anyone hoping to receive an absentee ballot can contact the clerk's office at 248-658-3310 or via email at clerk@berkleymish.net, or of course, you can stop by. And one last plug, if you do have your absentee ballot at home and it is completed, if you would please drop that off to the clerk's office, we do appreciate it. It helps us out. But of course, all voters have until 8:00 p.m. on Election Day to return their absentee ballot.
Thank you, Ms. Mitchell. And with the election on the 3rd, unfortunately, that means we will not be meeting on May 2nd, the day before. I do apologize in advance, everybody who was looking forward to that meeting. But we will have another one, I promise, in May. But I just wanted to make sure everybody was aware of that. Mr. Attorney?
And Mr. Mayor, I have no comments to share this evening.
Okay. I am going to kick it old-school, as the kids say, and give a Parks and Rec update, something that I had the pleasure to do for a number of years when I was the liaison with Mayor Protem. Under the weather today, I will handle that for her. Check out the Senior Exercise Class. You can walk in, no need to preregister, just come on in. It's gonna cost you $2 for the class, Tuesdays, 10:00 a.m., Fridays at 9:30, at the Community Center. Again, Senior Exercise, just walk on in. You don't have to register, don't worry about it. $2, Tuesdays at 10:00, Fridays at 9:30. Earth Day Tail on the Trail is going to start on April 22nd, so there's no certain event for this. You, as you have time and you're hanging out around J.C. Park, beginning April 22nd, you can follow the Earth Day Tail on the Trail. Those have become incredibly popular in our community, and so I want to make sure everyone's aware of that. And if you are 18 and older, looking for a summer job, it's a great place for you to work. It's a camp counselor for the Parks and Recreation Department. You can find information on the city's website of multiple folks who have been counselors here and have gone on to do tremendous things, not only in the city, but also outside of the city. And I know right now, folks are looking for, looking for a little money, looking for some experience. Great place to do it with our community, counseling the children that we have there in our summer's camp. I also, as Councilmember Price mentioned, want to, again, plug the J.C. Park fundraising efforts that are underway. We've got 21 days left to reach our goal, 50,000, to get the match from the MEDC. We are just under 50% of the way there, so we still certainly have some work to do. As was mentioned, we have a vision to build a truly inclusive playground with pathways, updated pathways, certainly increase the accessibility and use of the park. But really, we want a state-of-the-art, universally-accessible playscape, something, an entire park that, 2.7 acres, that we'll be incredibly proud of, and that will only happen if we can continue to get support. And I want to thank everybody, residents, business owners, even non-residents, folks who may no longer live around here but still have an interest and care about our community, for all the donations so far that we have received. We've only got three weeks left, and we really want to make sure that we capitalize on the matching funds from the MEDC. So if you know, know anybody who has an interest, please make sure to direct them to the website, or they can go to patricinity.com/JCPark. I think will take you right to it, exactly where you need to be, if you have the ability to donate. And that is all I have this evening. With that, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Support.
Motion made by Councilmember Gavin, with support from Councilmember Henan and Councilmember Vilani. Ms. Mitchell, would you please call the roll?
Gavin?
Yes.
Henan?
Yes.
Price?
Yes.
Vilani?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Turbrack?
Yes. The surprisingly efficient April 18th, 2022, meeting of the 39th Council of the City of Berkeley is adjourned.